She's got the background on it.
All right, Ms. Ferguson. Share your knowledge.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Hope everybody is well this morning. On Wednesday of this week, we had the second bid opening for this winter's canal dredging project. The first bid opening was on September 6th. At that time, we only received one bid till it had to go back out again. The two bids that were received this time were Markel at 1.2 million and King at 840,000. That is, the bid tab at attachment one in your packet. White Angle Engineering, Shane Lippert has certified King's bid and is recommending an award which is attachment two, and the contract is attachment three. We are recommending award of the contract. The only other two pieces of information that I wanted to let you know is that the contractor would like to start mobilization of being on site next week on Friday because they only do have a month to turn around to try to get the diport done before the dredging begins. However, the situation that we explained to you guys about the core change of the policy and not letting us use core sites anymore and we having to go to the Scotts Point site, we are still waiting for Cameron to sign off on our site, and they have had that information for three months. So, our engineer is leaning on them, and we are expecting them to expedite that process for us, and he's relaying this information, but any timetable may change based on that information as far as when he begins to be able to get on site and start that diport. And the second piece of information is the Canal Dredging Working Group did meet after this bid opening on Wednesday, and based on Shane's certification, if that came through, which he did do, they were eager to have King do the work because they're the ones that did it last time.
Any discussion?
Just make an observation. Make an observation, and I've talked to David and to Christie about it. These are so different, it put a red flag up for me, because it turns out the King dredging, which is the lower one, did it last time, so his numbers are probably good. And he has tools in his possession. If the other guy's gonna have to go up source, it can be very expensive, so his cost is gonna be more. So, the fact that he's already prepared for it, he's got the equipment, he's local, he's done it before, this cost is similar to what he did last time, is this is a much more reliable bid than I thought it was last time when I read it first time.
Was this the Sol, was King and Sol bid last?
And just in conversation, Markel did not stay for the bid opening. They dropped their packet off and left, but what it sounds like from the event port big conference is that Markel was gonna have some subcontractors and King's doing all of his own work.
We don't expect any change. Last time, there was no change in the contract?
I, I was not here last time, but I don't think so. David, last time, there was no change, and they didn't come back and ask for a change order?
But we didn't have to build a spoil containment area last time, I haven't.
But that's in the bid?
Yes.
That's correct.
Anything else? Not hearing none. Is there a motion?
Make the motion and accept the bid.
All right. Mike makes the motion, we accept the bid.
Second.
Second, Ms. Pat. Any more discussion?
Can, can I ask a question of the motion maker, that it take the form of the recommended motion and then, because that spells out exactly what we did expect.
Ms. Pat, do you agree with that?
Yes, I do.
All right. Everyone understand where we are?
Yep.
Any more discussion? Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Madam Ferguson, now, must approve the contract as submitted. Anything else?
I think I have the next item as well, because I was just standing in line.
All right. Very good. Continue, item three.
So, before you, Resolution 1810, the Inlet and Beach Protection Board worked on this resolution to put before you for consideration as an official policy statement for the town regarding the Lockwood Folly Inlet Navigation Maintenance and Association of Police Method of Disposal. I think since that time in the supplemental packet yesterday, Commissioner Bukowski has asked to distribute an alternative resolution that reorders things a little bit in priority order and decimal consolidation, so I will turn it over to her to explain anything she may want to say.
Okay. First, I'd like to say that what the Inlet Beach Management Board did was very, very good. It was like 90 percent of, of what I had in there, and I just decided it was easier rather than sit at a meeting and keep talking about what we could do, I'd take their recommendation and sort of tweak it, as I call it. And I, I spent a lot of my career doing stuff like this, so I, I just felt that it's easier to look at a document. Mostly, it was adding some, some additional verbiage for clarity. There was also, to me, the fact that we had two different things going on because we were making, you know, sort of like two resolutions, that it made sense to try to order it and break it in a way that sections referred to Resolution one or two. There were a couple little things I added that we implied, or people with local knowledge will understand, like we're on Long Bay. If you get outside of this area, that might not be known, and remember, an important thing, particularly important thing when you're writing a resolution, is to have in mind every place it should go or might go, which I don't really think we have fully teased out every place this might go. Could it go to a federal level? Is it just gonna be local? So, those are things that, that I always consider in how much detail you put in. There was a little bit more of making the clear point that sand moves from east to west, that the things that we're worried about might be sand being placed east of the folly ends up going back into the inlet or causing trouble again. Things we had discussed, and it was implied, but I felt was better spelled out. Actually, rereading this myself, I do have one of my own changes that it just didn't occur to me when I wrote it, because my mind was burned, I guess, on page 14. Whereas, no historical monitoring or modern modeling data, that should be state-of-the-art modeling data, of course. That's the standard phrase. So, I put this forward as just sort of a clarification and minor amendment of what had been produced that I think actually makes the reader more focused on how you get then to the resolutions. And I still think we have to have the discussion of every place that this might go to make sure that the way it is written would be suitable for all of the potential audiences.
Can you tell us what has been removed?
I don't believe I removed it. I, I did, I did not remove. The only thing that I removed, per se, if you want to say removed, is that at one point we talked about every place that the sand used to come from, and it was, it was Wilmington Inlet, Holden Beach Waterways, and the Shoals of the Lockwood Folly Inlet, and I simply took out the Wilmington because I didn't think it was relevant to what we were talking about here. So, that's on page 12 at the bottom, and I simply left it as the historical burrows were included, Holden Beach Waterways, and the Shoals of L.W. Reddenland.
I just, you know, I, I have a comment, and, you know, the original resolution that many of us, all the commissioners, sat in the inlet beach committee meeting, right, and the committee reviewed those, and we had an opportunity to comment on those. But I feel that the original resolution is, is a critical, well-done, time-sensitive document that was prepared by the town and the inlet beach committee, and compliment them for doing that. And it captures all of the critical, crucial statements that, once approved, will be shared with all of the required parties to state the position from the town of Holden Beach. You know, again, I use, I use that word, critical statements and time-sensitive. We know we have an issue. We know that when we were in New Bern, right, we were all kind of taken back and surprised by the fact. I think it's time, that past time, that we get this out in front of these folks ASAP. And David, I guess the question that I have is, who does this resolution go to? Start, not, not everybody, but the top, top-line people?
I believe that we've discussed that it should go to the county commissioners at the state level. It should go to the Division of Water Quality, the Division of Water Resources, our House of Representatives, State House of Representatives, our state senator, and then at the federal level, our congressman, and also our senator.
Okay. Well, Mr. Stone, get a copy of this too, as well?
I'm sending it to Chairman County Commissioners, who I just found in the office desk.
And the Army Corps of Engineers, is it? Ah, okay.
And again, this, this document, along with the, what Noel was currently working on, you know, is another, another critical part of this whole thing, and that's the easements. And I wait to hear from Noel at our next meeting pertaining to an update on the easement status. The other, the other point of information that David shared with us also is the fact that, that the, there is a temporary hold on all of the dredging projects throughout the state. So, now's the time to fire the cannon, as far as I'm concerned, and it can't be done later, it should be done sooner. Thank you.
My, my only, my only comment is, you know, and you already acknowledged it, Pat, that a lot of work went into it from the, from the committee, from our, from the board's committee, and I'm a little reluctant to wordsmith it, and I understand, you know, everybody likes to do that, but can we, can we ask the chairperson of that to comment on this? She's in the audience. Do you have any? Mr. Merrick, can we?
If your commissioners want it, that's no problem. Is that consensus?
Is it consensus?
You don't kind of speak in the microphone?
Could I just make a suggestion that we wait until all our comments are done before we ask the person who drafted the, the original to, to speak?
That would be the problem, see, David.
I, I would just like to respond to Joe's comments. My belief is that the committees that we, the subcommittees and committees that we appoint are here to give us advice. It's up to us to decide which, whether we're gonna follow it or not, and it's been the practice of the board prior to this particular issue to have a lot of input on what was finally decided by the Board of Commissioners. So, I would just like to say that, and, and in addition to that, I have stated on a number of occasions that I don't think it's appropriate for the board members to comment when one of the committees is doing their business because we influence them. I like their opinion, excuse me, I like to hear their opinion, absent any influence from myself or I would appreciate from the other board members. So, the fact that we had the opportunity to speak at the meeting doesn't really address the issue of whether all of our comments were actually given or taken into consideration. Next, I'd like to say that I really appreciate all the work that went into it, right? There's a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of discussion, a lot of hard work, and so, if any changes are made, it's, they're just to try to clarify or make it a little bit more powerful, the statement they're trying to make. And I guess fourth is, whichever way we go, there's gonna be no delay, we're gonna vote on it today, whether we accept the original or, or the amended one, so there'll, there'll be no effect on whether this is gonna be sent out to, to the people who are coming to receive it. Having said that, all of that, I'm in favor of the revised issue, but I just think it clarifies the issues, and I also have two different, I have two amendments to that. One of them, there's a typo on page 13. It says long term, federal long, long-term beach. It's like the third, whereas.
Oh, yes.
By a long-term beach plan.
Yep.
And then, in the, whereas, at the bottom, just, just to highlight the fact that I think we all are in agreement that by depositing the sand on Oak Island rather than on Holden Beach, it's that, that sand is going to drift back into the inlet much faster than if it was put on Holden Beach. So, I just changed it, where the, whereas, natural near-shore transport of sand, the lateral drift occurs from east to west in Long Bay, making sand placement on western of Oak Island of time-limited benefit while potentially impacting Lockwood Folly Inlet. That's what it currently says. And I just amended that to, so, I'm sorry, 13, second, second from the bottom. Whereas, natural near-shore transport of sand, the lateral drift occurs from east to west of Long Bay, making sand placement on western of Oak Island of time-limited benefit while increasing the negative impact on Lockwood Folly.
Yep.
I think that just makes the statement a little clearer. So, with, with those two revisions into the amended suggested letter, I would, I would ask the rest of the commissioners to consider sending the amended motion or, rather than the original, while acknowledging and appreciating all the hard work that was done by the committee. Thank you.
John or Ms. Pat, do you have anything to say?
I have to, my, my issue here is, we have a proposal from a subcommittee that I thought was a good proposal, and when I heard when they discussed it, they had, I thought it did a good job. I think it does a good job. Could I wordsmith it? I thought about this last night. Yeah, I could wordsmith it, and I could keep wordsmithing, like, and every month, take a look at it and make a little bit of improvement. I don't think that's necess, I don't think it's necessary. I think this document does what we intended it to do. They, they did it for it, they helped us put it together, I think it does a good job. It could be improved, but as it is, it does the job, and I would be in favor of approving it as it is, and getting it out, because I agree it's time-sensitive. Quickly, this message is, if we have a position regarding the sand in the inlet, then it's important, and I think the public needs to know what our position is.
I, I would like to remind everybody that, again, as Mike said, the Inlet Beach Management Board is an advisory board. We don't have to delay approving an amended version. It doesn't have to go back to them to rework it. We can approve with changes and do it, if we want to do it today, if we're convinced we know all of our audiences and that it is appropriate for all of those levels, then we can approve it today. Now that I've heard that, you know, we are acknowledging it is local, it is state, and it is federal, and where I felt that this needed a little bit more bolstering was if it went at a federal level to have more clarity for people who are not intensely aware of what is happening here. So, there doesn't have to be a delay in doing it. And again, I know that I sat at the meeting, and one of the requests I made was since we had two resolutions, to make it clear how the resolutions were being fed, and that was, in the end, one of the things that I tried to do by sectioning it. My last point would be, the people who are sitting here who have the most experience working with delivering documents to different audiences, our, our town manager and our assistant town manager, so I, I'm interested in, if they don't feel that the change brings anything, helps anything, that's fine, but I would also like to hear what they think about the clarity and detail that was added.
Put them on the spot.
I'll speak to it. Either one of them will work. I think that the version, the, the second version does refine a bit and reorganizes. It looks like there's a, stuff was moved in whole paragraphs with, with some minor wordsmithing. Either one of them would work. I, I think that we want to make sure that we keep an eye on the prize here and that this is a policy document and that it goes, goes out with the widest fire-for-effect that we can. I mean, either one of them work. The revision set forth by Commissioner Pat does seem to reorganize, and logically, to me, it flows better, but I don't get it.
And I'll just say that, of course, I work closely with the Inlet Beach Protection Board, and we'll always value what they say, but they are a subcommittee, and anytime, anything brings something to you guys are able to make changes to that, to whatever your pleasure is, as long as we get this document out to get us where we need to be and make a stance as, and moving forward, I think, I think either of them will do that for you, so it's just whatever your preference is.
I would like to share some thoughts on this I made, if I'm not outboard. There are some concerns that I have that don't deal with the verbiage in the document. This is gonna be public record, of course, and who knows, as a question was asked, who will be receiving this and have access to it? Well, it's the whole world that will have access to it, and one of the main concerns that I have is that some of the documentation might be literally correct as it's written. It is also painful, Lockwood Folly Inlet, the Holden Beach side of it, as the most erodeable, most hazardous, most risky, you know, keep right on the list of things of any property in Long Bay, maybe. So, what does that do to the investors? What does that do to the insurance companies? And the risk goes on and on, taking that with a wide brush of high-risk, don't go there type looks. It makes me think about Ocean Isle Beach. Is there anyone in the room that feels like that Holden Beach is a range faster than the eastern of Ocean Isle Beach right now? The doc, I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry.
This has been part of the discussion all along. I understand.
And so, why, why pay ourselves into a corner that tends to be labeled as the most risky place in Long Bay? You know, that's a big concern. Then, kind of a problem not only popular to say this, this is good hard work. It's a good exercise, but it's not the way it works. In the real world, in the real world, getting things done is behind the scenes, communications with the corps and so forth. Most of this information is already in the hands of the corps and, and the right kinds of people. They know that, so I'm wondering, who are we trying to influence with this? And I really don't know the answer to that question. We all agree, we're all on the same team, but what is our goal? Because we've got to have results by attaining our goal. We have this information, the people that are gonna make the decisions have this information. So, I might say this fair, and I might say nothing ill, but I do have a problem with some other facts. There's no addressing the fact that in the last 40 years or so, 50 years, we've lost, you know, we keep calling that the eastern of the beach, but where is the eastern of the beach? First of all, you think, way down there on the east, or John, for example, where your house was down there? How about that row of houses and lots that's gone from down there since I, we may mention that? How about further down? You know, it's, it's the big picture, it's not the recent picture. And, and I know we're all trying to do good, and we're all trying to accomplish the same thing, but I, I don't know that so much of this negative stuff in here is not helping us accomplish anything by making the world aware of it, whenever the ones that we're trying to convince already have. And I don't really mean to ramble on, but are we 100% certain that all this data is 100% correct? I know, as I said earlier, whenever you look at a timeframe of the last 10 or 15 years, that specific statement might be true, but in the big picture, the bigger picture, it might not be true, and again, pointing to Ocean Isle is certainly eroding more than all the beach, so why do we want to state that it's the most erodeable part in Long Bay? I don't know, but I'm, shut up, I just, I can argue some different angles on this thing. I'll be quiet. Really listen to her. You wanna come up and speak in the microphone, ma'am? And we do appreciate the hard work of you and your group.
Well, I didn't come prepared to speak today, but I will tell you, to address Alan's comments, as far as accuracy of the document, I have to trust what Fran came up with. I mean, that's what Fran says, so he's the expert as far as I'm concerned. And as far as, you know, who originally drafted this, let's give credit where credit's due, and that's our staff. They came to us, they brought it to our, our first agenda meeting, because we, my coach here, Mike, and I, we meet with, with the staff prior to the meetings to go over the proposed agenda. And we had our first meeting, August 16th, and they brought this to be the first product of this board, and they had the draft already then, and so they came up with this, and they felt like this was something that the staff needed, and they journeyed out in their business to meet with their different peers to communicate. So, if, if the staff feels that they need this document... So if, if the staff feels that they need this document, I want them to have it ASAP. So whether they use it, whether they just hold it up, whatever, if they feel like they need it, I want them to have it. So that's why I'm pushing to get something done on. Now, last night when I got this, I saw it in the back of the packet that Heather sent out, and I went through the original, and then I went through Patty's and started going through it, and pretty much every paragraph's got changed. So I kind of stopped going through it because it's a lot of, a lot of changes. In whatever version you adopt, I urge you to run it through a spell checker and run it through a grammar checker. Please put it on Grammarly. Don't send anything out that you don't run through Grammarly or at least a grammar checker. Because there's more than you spotted, Mike. But I, as I was going through it, I just kind of stopped at about ten thirty and I thought, I'm gonna stop. And went through, kind of, where did we come from to get to this point? And we started August sixteenth with that first agenda meeting, where the staff brought the draft. And then we had our first, our first beach board meeting, and that was going to be the, you know, when we had the, Fran came, I think every one of you guys were there, and we worked through that, we spent, you know, quite a bit of time working through that, and it was going to be the first work product that we sent to you. The, the final version was on the agenda for your meeting. It was Resolution eighteen-ten. Unfortunately, the meeting was canceled due to Florence. We had another agenda meeting, we agreed we were going to bring it back to the, to the beach board meeting, since the beach board didn't get to see the final version. And we also had quite a few changes in situations due to the lockwood folly situation. Beach Board net, we had a few minor changes. And because it was already eighteen dash ten, we agreed that those minor changes were going to just be slip sheeted. I don't know if those are in the original version, page sixteen and seventeen that was in your packet for today or not. I'm not sure what the slip sheet reading was included or not.
The AIWW in the first paragraph, the initial fore两句 after the word "whereas."
Yep.
And then the other changes were in, now therefore be it resolved. And they, they were changed and included.
Great.
They were very small.
And then last night, we had the change from Patty's, so that's kind of where it stands. But my point being, you know, that there's quite a bit of work leading up to that, but that's kind of what I wanted to say. Now, I read Patty's version. There's not a lot of it that gives me heart, you know, a lot of heartburn or anything. Most of it seems to be a reordering, a rewording. There's, there were a couple of things that she changed, she left out that I would have included. For example, changes to tourism. Now, from my reading, it seems that tourism is important to the county and it's important to the state. I would leave tourism in there. You know, that kind of thing, but it's your call. This board is an advisory board. We advise you, we, we send you drafts for you to approve, and that's up to you. So whatever you approve, that's, that's your prerogative. And I'm a member of that board, and I think if it were just me, if it were just the Vicki Myers board, whatever I sent to you would not be, it would not be what the beach board sent you, but I don't have that right. So I fully recognize that I'm just one member of one board. So, you know, that's kind of my statement. But I also, I really respect the other members of my board, and I'm, I'm speaking for myself and not for them.
Having taken, listening to the mayor, I'd just like to, and I, I appreciate, as Vicky did, that the comments being made about our East End erodibility and things, and I find it in different places, in reports that have been written by our consultant. But I think your point is, Mr. Mayor, is do we really want to be emphasizing the opinion that the East End of Holden Beach is the most erodible place in Long Bay? And again, given that you see what some of the other islands have, and it's the, does it bring something special to a resolution document to state that?
Where is the saying?
Is the third one down on page twelve?
In the original resolution, it can be found on page sixteen, maybe third from the bottom. And it was, it was transferred as is to the version that I created, amended version.
Yeah, I can appreciate the mayor's comments as well, but, you know, we're in competition for sand, right? So we don't show a need, and, and maybe that's a little, maybe we can dial that back a little bit, but we definitely have to show a need. So we, and get off our share.
I guess the point that, that I got confused when I read the newspaper, and I won't mention the individual's name, but they have said that, one of the comments was that Holden Beach may not need the sand. That sticks in my head, and I'll never forget that saying, because that's not the case. We need the sand.
I, I think the key to the, the resolution isn't the less, since which is our position. And I think it's pretty clear, we get evidence as to why we think it is, but it's critical that we be the recipient of the sand. If we're going to widen and deepen the inlet, that's our position, and I hope the board all agrees, we think we should get that sand. And the other is that ATM's position, placement anywhere other than Holden Beach could cause adverse impacts on our west, on our East End, and I think that's a given. I don't think there's any question about that. To me, those two issues, which is our position, get brought up clearly in this document.
In, in both, too.
In both, okay. I just don't see the need to change the original document. But that's my position, or five of us.
Yeah, I could, I could believe it. Like you said, they're almost, almost identical.
If you're going to talk about Long Bay later in Resolution eighteen-ten, you somewhere up top need to say what Long Bay is. That's one of the reasons I actually, and, and one of the reasons I specified we're in Brunswick County, and then that we're bordered by the ocean and the area of Long Bay, because later we talk about Long Bay. Again, think about it as, if this goes at a federal level, people are not going to be intimately aware of where Holden Beach is in the grand scheme of all of the barrier islands. And when you mention things further down in the document, make sure it's been defined earlier.
Where is tourism?
Oh, I, I do remember taking it, just trying to keep it more focused on, I think, science and sand and the environmental impact rather than the tourism, which is an economical impact. It's, um...
I think having a word in there, tourism, is really necessary.
I think in the original, it's on page seventeen, one, two, three, four, five, down?
It's on page fourteen. It was orig, it would have been in page, page fourteen, third whereas.
Pat, do you have any objections to the event? Where would it be?
No, I, I think that it's sensitive and mentioned in the second whereas on fourteen, where we were talking about recreation and tourism-related opportunities. I mean, I kind of remember saying, I'm not sure that it really adds, but no, I have no objection to the fact. I created this for discussion and...
It's in there. Fourteen is the same as seventeen.
Yeah, it says it on page fourteen, is that coming down?
Okay. I mean, my, my position is, maybe we can dial back, you know, a little bit on we're the worst, but that has a cost, you know? We're, we're trying to, we're trying to present a need. I understand the delicacy of that.
But, all right, it's, and I appreciate what the mayor's talking about, too, and it's, it's like, we're looking at a snapshot of today and the last few years and all, and I agree, arguably, would you say that our East End is in worse shape than Ocean Isles? And it's always a question. But, I mean, again, we can change that statement and still make the point that we're in need by, whereas Holden Beach East End has, has significant erosion rates. And then, you know, we've got, over the last year, we lost sixty-seven thousand, which is in the historical, whereas twenty-seven oceanfront homes have been lost along East End since nineteen ninety-three due to erosion. Does that establish, does that establish the need? Without saying we are the worst, which is a, it's, it's a, it's an opinion that's in different reports.
Ladies and gentlemen, I've got a problem. Whenever I agreed for this meeting at this time of day, I thought it was a one item agenda. It was going to be a five to fifteen minute meeting. I have to be at the college. I've got a mass of people waiting for me, and I have to be there at eleven o'clock. I apologize.
May I ask, are you more older on the eleven, where we have set the, we're having the meeting that you called? Do you have more time on your eleven? Which is only next?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Is that another meeting that we have?
You come to each other.
Yeah, that's, that's the, yeah.
And wouldn't this meld into that? We'll have to, we'll have to...
Would people object to six more days?
I would encourage you to hear what you're going to hear at that meeting.
I, I don't want to delay this any more than other people, but would people agree that six more days and we can come to that meeting with everybody's thorough, what you would see to change, add, whatever, and make a decision on Thursday, the eleven?
That's fine, ma'am. We can, we can do it after.
We have the table this long.
Then we would, yes, but I'm, I'm just asking the question.
I mean, you guys are welcome to continue. I can leave. Sorry, I'm sorry about that. I just didn't know.
I like, I like the idea of the, the original document from the standpoint of, and I know you can get a little too short in your, in your verbiage, and I appreciate the fact that, Pat, that you want to have further identification for those that may not be familiar with our area or our island. But in going back and looking at the document, if that's what we agree to do, right, that I think we keep it short, we keep it to the point.
I'm just going to say that if I use small type, if I, I did...
Not small type, I'm not saying small type.
No, no, I'm just saying, I did not, I did not add, I did not add that much. One of the reasons it comes across as much longer is that, again, I used a type that I actually had an easy time reading.
Yeah. No, no, by that I mean, when you look at the document and I look at the whereas and whereas and whereas in the original document, they're very short little statements. And so if we can keep to the short statement idea, I, I like that.
You know, six days is six days, and, you know, you told me, David, is anything between now and six? I feel like I'm watching Washington DC or, I'm maybe delayed, but anyway.
Capping off here.
Don't break that down.
No, I'm ready to support your reading.
Oh, she's like, seriously.
Can I help with you answering that question?
Well, I, I can tell you that, as I said, the day's Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, but it's Thursday, the eleven?
To, to our knowledge, no, I don't think so as far as other meetings, but the one thing we don't know about, and, and I think you guys saw that, was the Brunswick County said mid to late October. They didn't give a date. I, to me, next week's not quite mid yet, but if they can bring that up and...
That's what I'm saying. You know, we, a decision could be made between now and then, and, and I, I, I'd accommodate the mayor, too, if you wanted, you know, if you want to be the worst, you know, but I would, I would make that change and I feel more comfortable doing something today. I don't want to, I don't want to look next week and say, oh, if something happened, why do we wait a week for it? I mean, I could, I could go with either version right now.
And I think we could accommodate the mayor's issue by just eliminating Long Bay comment. It's the worst erosion rate on the island.
I, I think we still have to just have a statement that there is a significant erosion rate on the East End.
That says that. It's the worst erosion rate on the island.
You change it to, well, it says worst in Long Bay.
But we can eliminate worst in Long Bay.
And just have worst on the island.
It's worst on the island. That's why, so do us, our East End, which is affected by this coming from the east, is impacted and it's our worst area of erosion to begin with. I don't think having a Long Bay comparison is necessarily critical to, to knowing it's important to us and how we decide it.
So what do we want to say then? Holden Beach East End has the largest historical?
Erosion rate on the island.
Yeah.
That's where we do talk, okay, we do talk about Long Bay as well.
We just took Long Bay out. Maybe I'll go ahead, Pat, so I'm on the original. So for Pat's document, what do we do?
Where, where are your documents at?
The clerk made some clarification.
What's one of mine switching on?
We sort of need to work that from, um...
I think Pat's is on page twelve, the third one down, at least one drop. I really, I really don't, I think they would have had to let us know if they're going to hold a county meeting by now, isn't any groups that have to come in from outside if y'all want extra days?
So what we would do is, is third whereas, whereas Holden Beach East End has the largest historical erosion rates on the island. On the island, with twenty-seven oceanfront homes having been lost since nineteen ninety-three due to erosion. Period. You know, and then, and then go on. My question was, I suggest, do we want to put the dates in of the most recent monitoring covered, or do we not need to? We just dump them, okay?
I think there's, I think there's a far limit in here as to the situation. We've given enough examples of the crisis that's been had, and we just want to draw attention that it's our East End that's being put at risk, and our position is, we want the sand, we need the sand, and if anybody puts it east of us...
It probably just goes right back into where...
Goes back into the inlet, which we tried to clear to begin with.
So if we're now working from the amended version, what I have is, the third whereas on page twelve, we changed to Holden Beach's East End has the largest historical erosion rate on the island. Eliminating in Brunswick County, Long, Long Bay. The next whereas, we simply do not have to put any dates. The whereas on page thirteen, third down to typo of long-term beach plan, instead of long-irm. Under let it further be known, page thirteen, the second whereas, which was Mike's suggestion, whereas natural nearshore transport, blah, 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 of time-limited benefit while increasing the negative impact on the Longwood, Longwood Folly, in the, yeah, the, the Lockwood Folly inlet. So you take out... So you take out potentially impacting and putting increasing the negative impact on. And then on page fourteen, the fourth whereas, instead of modern modeling, state-of-the-art modeling, sorry about that, I just hadn't had it in my head at the moment. And then, Vicky, I'm minded like you. I thought I did drop one place comment on tourism unless I put it back in.
It's on the second.
Yeah, so it's on page fourteen.
I think I found it.
You found it. There was another one, I think. I may, yeah.
I think it, Vicky, tell me if this is wrong. The, okay, on the original document, page seventeen, one, two, three, four, five, six down, after loss of habitat at Indianas End, an impact to tourism.
Yes.
So, um...
So that would be, that would be page fourteen, the third whereas, including accelerated erosion, loss of habitat, an impact on tur, a negative impact on tourism, I would say. And a need for placement of sandbags and eventual on tourism. So do you see that, Tamper?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yeah. Okay. And then those were the changes that we discussed. So you now have the two, those were the changes discussed. And it's just a decision, which one, which one do you want to approve? The original will have the change to remove the largest historical in the county of Long Long Bay.
I'm making a position, I'll take either one. We're both good at that. And whoever makes the motion decides which one you do. Boss?
Yes, one other comment. We have to decide whether or not we want to make the vote today or else do we want to delay it for the time? Because and the reason, to let hold this one on to the committee, we're going to consider hiring a firm to represent documentaries. I think it would be wise for us to see what that firm has to say concerning this particular document. Whether they think it's going to help in their representation of us or whether in some way it could be adverse to our representation. And as Christie said about five minutes ago, since no meeting has been called here for notification of meeting, it's readily online that anything will be done. So I think the waiting the six days would be prudent thing to do. It would give us an opportunity to look at the documents, both of them, and not leaving that, so I made that point. My other point is, I've heard her say, I'm happy with either one. They're both will do it. My question is, which one do we believe is the best? Not in any way diminishing the work that was put in by either Pat or by the committee, but the finished product that we're going to be deciding on, which one as an individual do you believe is the best? That's the one that we should be voting on. So those are two things that have to be considered, whether we're going to do it today, wait until the eleventh, and which one of these documents, if we're going to do it today, which one of these documents do you think is the one that we should be submitting?
I'd like to make a motion. Make a motion that we accept Pat's updated version of the document to include the revisions that we talked about. And we approve it today.
I second that.
Discussion?
Yes, there any discussion?
Yeah, my comment is, the eleventh is an event, but we're going to hear it from somebody, but then we have to decide, so it will be held. And I think, I think we got, we were behind the ball time-wise before. I don't want to make that same mistake. And not that it was a mistake before, but I don't want to, I see no benefit of waiting.
Do you have any comment?
I guess my comment is more than a potential consultant because I would like to have the mayor's one more time over it. I can go ahead with accepting. I don't think that we will be sending it anywhere before the middle of the month. As Christie says, if something was going to happen, we probably would have been notified by now. So it's, to have it, to have it ready doesn't necessarily mean we're going to send anything out before the eleventh. Okay?
I hope you're in wrong.
But it would be, no, but it would be, it would be ready if we, but I think it's unlikely that it will be sent out before the eleventh anyplace.
Okay, I'll have my comment. I hope to God that that is not the case because this should be sent out immediately to everyone to the sermon. I hope it's not good. I hope that expectation of staff does not sit on it.
No, I don't, I didn't mean...
And, yeah, the front row.
But I think there's, sending a resolution out, and again, it depends upon the degree of familiarity to the people you send it to. So if people have every bit of documentation and scientific fact and supporting report that we have available already, and this is just emphasizing, drawing their attention to it, then the cover letter and the resolution would say, you know, here is, that is used in conjunction with data you already have. If you are sending it to people who are less familiar, that do not have all of that, it goes as part of the package. And so, again, that's my question of how we are using this exactly to different audiences. Some audiences that we're using it with are already totally O-F-A-D, and it's just a matter of sort of reemphasizing to them why the data supports the resolutions, that they have the data. But if it starts to go further, then it goes as part of the package, not just as a letter and a resolution. So that's why I was sort of like, I'm not sure if we're going to need it next week or not, but it would be ready if we did. And that would be for local use for people who already have all the facts, I assume. It's not going someplace new. So again, I can go with approving it. I would have liked to have the mayor's one more. But again, there is nothing that says that we've done it before and reopened and amended a recently passed resolution because somebody all of a sudden was like, you know, with another set of thinking, I think we need to prove this. I'd rather not do that.
It's our responsibility to follow, to follow this.
Less complicated, it certainly is. But again, I can't see a problem in delaying it until, let me make it. People who we may have represent us have an opportunity to tell us whether this is a good idea or not. But the same way we hired other people who are experts in the field, we followed their advice because they have the experience and are there to help us. And I don't see that this particular, we can decide today which one we're going to use. And on the eleventh, all of this is, we're going to send it once we list these people. And I don't see the harm in waiting for those six days.
So just like we voted on the first topic of discussion, it's time-sensitive. This, if we delay, then we're just saying, I don't want to give the impression at all that we're not, that we aren't thinking that this is time-sensitive. This, we have an opportunity to, I hope, that things are stopped now and when they're going to start back up. So to me, this is extremely time-sensitive. And it should be back on today, except that that's not a issue.
Acting on is approving the version.
Correct.
No, well, the motion, the motion says approving the version and sending it out, I understand.
That's not what the, that's not what the motion said. And if you guys could please do us a favor and clarify, since you guys don't seem to be on the same page, could you also add the vote as to whether you want us to send it or just keep it at this point? Because I just, we don't want to, if half of you are the same one. The motion is to accept Pat's updated version of the document to include the revisions we talked about and approve it today. So that's just approving it at this point.
I'll modify the motion to both approve it and for the town to send it.
Send it to whom? Please specify.
Send it to the list of people. That's why I asked the question in the beginning of the meeting, for the folks that would be receiving this. Lady Montecito?
I said the county commissioners, North Carolina Division of Water Flock and Division of Water Resources, Representative Iver, Senator Raven, the North Carolina Congressional Representative Rousier, our state's, our US senator, and then also the Corps of Engineers. But I would qualify that to allow the staff's discretion in addition to, whenever we say, well, we need to send it to someone, say, why this, if we could administratively understand that it's our job to make sure that it's distributed as widely as possible in addition to the more obvious ones.
And that is without any supporting documents?
The document and the proof of resolution.
No, so again, there's equal key, yeah. People who are local are very aware of and have the data. When it gets further, there is not the same database available to the people who received the resolution. Does this make a difference or not? My opinion and experience is, it does make a difference if you have attached appendices supporting data to people who get a resolution who are further from the immediate area. So although the locals, immediate people, can get a resolution without any additional information, I don't know that you do that to the state or federal if you want them to take it, let's just say, with the utmost priority. I think that that's where having it, so it's not that sending it immediately to every, of every one of the targets is necessary to achieve the purpose. It's sending it with the right information as promptly as possible. So if it's the local, the county that gets the resolution because they know everything else, and a local corps, they know everything else, that's one thing. Sending it to Rousier without any other, shall I say, evidence or substantiating information may be premature and not enough. And again, I would rely on the staff's discretion of how to do it beyond our immediate area the most appropriate way with the most persuasive data or summary report or whatever.
You know, to me, you know, the revised document and your verbiage that you added to here is self-explanatory, as far as I'm concerned. And, but there's a motion on for it.
Have we done a discussion?
Yeah, my other point is, nationally, statewide, we've gotten a little bit of news lately, but I think people, you know, we're focused, we should strike while the iron is hot. So I think people know where Wilmington, Rachel Beach, and the Barrier, as being the Barrier Islands, they know where they are across the country right now.
No. I guess, I guess I still believe that in general, when people talk about out of veins and Barrier Islands in North Carolina, there is still focus Wilmington and north, but it's just, and I'm not, I do believe that the Florence impact is important to build on it, but that's not about inlet dredging, that's about, that's about beach damage, just to comment, okay? I, again, I think it's fine to approve one of these if the decision is we want to use it locally quickly, although I'd still say it would be worthwhile waiting until the eleventh. But when we go further, I would prefer to have the staff to evaluate whether or not there needs to be an addendum if we're going to send it out at a state and federal level to get maximum immediate recognition. You don't want it to go to the bottom of the pile.
Madam Clerk, could you just read the motion one more time, please?
Yes, sir.
If someone describes it, we can go on.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Butler to accept Pat's updated version of the document to include revisions we talked about and to approve it today. Second by Commissioner Fletcher. And then the motion was modified to approve it and for the town to send it to the list of people mentioned earlier. And I do not have the second on the modify.
And list of people and, like David had mentioned, if there's, you know, leave out the staff, if there's more.
Are you modifying the motion?
I'm modifying the motion to David's comment.
Yeah, I'll certainly accept David's opinion on this and certainly modify the document accordingly.
The motion, excuse me.
Second. I agree.
Okay. So on the favor side?
Aye.
Or against, say no? No? So for the one motion passes.
Who's your gentleman?
For the gentleman?
Second. Thank you, Mike.